We're going to call to order the meeting for March 11th, 2024, the Ellisville Town Council. Who wants to do the prayer?
Thank John.
John?
We're going to say a prayer. Father, we gather this evening to do business for the town, and we ask that you give us wisdom, Father, and to do the right things for the town and the town's people, and that you give knowledge and peace to everyone present. We keep a civil debate, and we get everything done that would be pleasing to you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Kip, you want to do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, when you're ready, please, roll call.
Scott Olden.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Pamela Samples.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, February 26th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Acts to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Next, we come to a very wonderful thing, a distinguished service award presented for the fire department.
Good evening, Kevin Patton, Fire Chief with the Ellisville Fire Department. I'll read this, and hopefully I won't mess it up. The town of Ellisville has 14 different awards that can be given to a first responder or civilian. Those can be nominated by a civilian, a fellow first responder, or the town council. After receiving a nomination with the fire department, the Board of Chief Officers validate, verify the circumstances surrounding it, and if the award is justified, the fire service holds all of these awards to a very high standard, of course. With only 14 awards, three of these are only awarded by the town council. These are the highest honor. After the Board of Chief Officers reviewed circumstances surrounding the following event, we felt that the council needed to be made aware of this, and after it was reviewed, it was decided that this was very special and should be recognized. On February 8th, 2024, Captain Matthew Seabot was traveling to Indianapolis with his family for a visit to the children's museum. While on Kentucky Avenue near the intersection of Mooresville Road, he came upon a vehicle accident that had just occurred. An Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Officer had stopped in a travel lane with lights activated to clear a mattress from the road that had come out of another vehicle. Moments later, a second police officer arrived, traveling to work, and another vehicle, for an unknown reason, came into contact with that officer, causing a second, causing a crash. The collision forced the second officer's vehicle to roll over, trapping the officer upside down in the car. The vehicle sustained heavy damage, causing the officer to have obvious traumatic injuries. Captain Seabot arrived just after the impact having, happened, stopping and identifying himself as a firefighter with the Ellisville Fire Department. The other officer, not seriously injured in the accident, reported to Captain Seabot that he believed the entrapped officer needed immediate assistance, and he could not find a pulse. Captain Seabot, without hesitation, began to care for the injured officer with the assistance from the police officer on the scene. They removed the officer from the damaged vehicle and found that he did not have a pulse and was not breathing. Captain Seabot, with the officer's assistance, removed the officer's protective vest and began CPR. With little medical equipment, Captain Seabot was able to stabilize the officer's airway, and before the ambulance and fire crews arrived, they were able to restore the officer's pulses and respirations. Statements from the paramedics and IMPD officers on the scene that day made it very clear to the Ellisville Fire Department that had Captain Seabot not stopped and rendered aid that day to the officer's outcome would have been very different, if not fatal. So I present Matthew Seabot to the town council.
Thank you.
Matt? Go right up here, Scott. And to give you a little update on the officer, the officer is still in the hospital, recovering, and he is able to start walking with assistance at this time. So, right now, the outcome looks very favorable.
On behalf of the council, we are presenting you with distinguished service award.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Appreciate everything you do every day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Just to kind of underscore how rare event this is, this is my 17th year on council, and this is the first time the council's ever awarded this to the firefighters or officers. So it definitely means something to all of us. Again, Matthew, thank you. Moving along right now to opening the bids for the Starnes Road Water Project.
The first one is from company Core and Main, which submitted its bid electronically, and the total is $133,856.50. The second bid is from Utility Supply Company. Its total is $140,466.46. The third one is from Team EJP Solutions. Their bid is for $137,552.96. And at this time, I would suggest to the council that they take the bids under advisement in order to review them.
Question?
Yes.
Will we have to wait till the next meeting to board?
Yes, unless we want to go over them right now.
Has that a problem, Mike, timewise?
Yeah, I'm ready to start digging.
Okay.
And whether, if it's terrible, we should be planning, so.
Do you want to look them over while the meeting goes on?
Yeah, I can do that.
So with permission from the rest of the council, let's move this to the very bottom of the agenda. Before we get to privilege of the floor, we'll put it under old business and revisit that then to see if we can make some movement tonight. Any objections? Okay. Moving along now, there are no resolutions on our agenda for this evening. There are two ordinances on first reading. The first ordinance is 2024-07 to amend multiple sections of the police personnel policy.
At the last town council meeting, the town council discussed ordinance 2024-04, which is up for second reading, and there were some questions about sections of the policy, that, sections of the personnel policy that were not being changed that might be inconsistent with 2024-04. So ordinance 2024-07 encompasses several other sections of the police department policy with suggested changes to make it mesh with 2024-04. So we've made some changes in the definition section, and there are some changes in the work week hours, and there are some changes to how sick leave is calculated, paid sick leave is calculated.
Are there questions on this from council? Deputy Chief, do you want to put anything here? This is first reading, but do you have any comments?
I think we've reviewed most, everything associated, also included would be the overtime and how it is awarded. So I think we're falling in line with other departments, not only within the town, but outside of town, in terms of how we calculate overtime. So that's going to require the officer or personnel work a full 40 hours before they're eligible for overtime. This is the case of just here recently, so we made some changes with that, so we follow in line, also following in line with the fire department personnel as well.
All right, this will come back to us at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Next ordinance is ordinance 2024-08 to amend the fire personnel policy to clarify the town's policy on supervision of relatives.
As you are all aware, the state does not permit nepotism. So typically, one employee cannot be in the direct line of supervision of another employee. However, the purpose of this ordinance is to take into consideration what could happen in the future if, for example, you have a firefighter who starts with the department, maybe as a volunteer, maybe as a part-time firefighter, maybe they don't intend to work full-time for Ellisville, they end up working full-time for Ellisville, another relative gets hired, and pretty soon, both of those employees find themselves in the chain of command. So the question is, what do you do about that? And I wrote to the State Inspector General, and they said, this isn't us, I can't help you. And so I put a request out on the municipal listserv, and I said, what do you other municipalities do in this situation? And so I believe it was Plainfield sent a copy of an ordinance, which I looked at and kind of toggled with a bit, but the purpose of this is to just make it clear that one employee cannot be in the direct line of supervision of another employee. So if the new member is a relative of the chief, then that new member's departmental chain runs to and ends with the next officer in the chain of command. In the event the new member is a relative of the deputy chief or other intermediate supervisor, that new member's direct line of supervision shall circumvent the deputy chief or other immediate supervisor. So basically, the situation is you're either going to run up or down the chain of command until you find someone who is not in direct line of supervision of that particular relative, which I think is what the town has been doing on an informal basis in any event, but this just sort of formalizes the policy.
Okay. Questions from council on this?
None.
Chief, do you want to speak to this at all?
Yes. We've not had any issues with this, we're just trying to make sure down the road, like Darla explained, that these situations can be taken care of. In the past, we've actually had two people that started as part-time, worked their way into, I'm sorry, started as volunteer, worked their way into part-time, and this would just allow us, as the chain of command works every day, it just spells it out more, and if you get to that relative, then you can either go past them or even to the Public Safety Board, which is the town council, if it's a issue with the chief themselves.
Okay. Again, questions from council?
Mr. President, before we get on to ordinances on second reading, since we do have a, some a lot of people that may want to speak today, I would make a motion, because I don't think we have it formally, that time is limited to three minutes.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Denise, we're going to go ahead and vote on this. I think at some point in time we ratified, but it was years ago, rules of the council meetings as they were, and this mimics that, but just in case those were not carried over through the years.
Okay.
So whenever you have a chance to do roll call, please.
Scott Olden.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to ordinance on second reading, ordinance 2024-04, clarifying how overtime pay is calculated for police officers.
There were some comments by the town council or some questions about the wording in the ordinance at the last meeting, so hopefully this draft answers all of those questions and eliminates any issues.
If I can kind of short circuit this, I would put a, I would move that we table this so that we can hear this ordinance and ordinance 07 at the same time, since they are both police personnel related and pay related. That way, we don't have any overlap or any, anytime we get into a conflict.
I will second that motion.
Motion is second.
You ready? Scott Olden.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
So that's tabled, and we'll hear both of them at the same time for clarity purposes. The next ordinance is ordinance 2024-06, which is a water rate increase as approved by the IURC.
As you are aware, the town petitioned the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission for an increase in the water rates. The IURC, back in February, I believe it was the 9th or the 7th of February, approved the rates, but they did not approve the rates that the town had requested. The rates that were approved were slightly lower. So this ordinance is the rates that were actually approved, and I believe that these have been posted on the town's website since the last meeting.
Okay. Anything?
Well, I just wanted to mention that this is phase one of the rate increase. A phase two will be implemented once we start the construction of the new Department of Public Works bill, and that will phase in, and then we'll add additional 8.5% to the bill. Just so everybody wonders what kind of raise it is dollar-wise, current rates are $18.22 for water, minimum bill. Approved rate will be $23.94, and if everybody's used to just looking at their bill with water and sewer on it, it'll raise the old bill with water and sewer and storm from $58.97 to $64.96. That includes storm, water, and sewer. So a 4,500 gallon user, which is the average for our customers, a current rate is $27.30, and the approved rate will be $34.97 for water, and that'll up the bill, if you add the sewer and storm, to, from $78.62 to $87.23. So I have a 6,500 gallon user, but I can presume two of these must be included. It'll be on April's bill.
Questions from council?
Yes, Mike, that other increase you mentioned, the 8.5%, I think?
Yes.
Now, has that already been approved by the IURC, or does it need to go through the?
It has been.
Okay.
It has been approved, but that was with the condition that it would not be implemented until we start paying on the new bill.
Understood. I just, it's, we've already, this is, for the public, this is the same rate increase we're talking about that we approved.
It is.
Back in July, August, something like that?
Let's see, the ordinance was passed May 22nd, 2023.
Okay. So it's not like that's a surprise to anybody, this has been part of the whole thing?
That was the ordinance authorizing the filing of this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the proposed rates.
Right. Other council comments or questions? Moving now to the public with a reminder on a three-minute time limit. Are there questions from the public or comments? Seeing none, we're back to the council. Well, anyone on Zoom? No? We're back to the council now for action.
I move we approve ordinance 2024-06, water rate increase approved by the IURC.
Second.
Motion is second, Denise?
Scott Olden.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Okay, now we come down to envision Ellisville update. Mr. Ray?
Just a short update, want to thank the town and everybody involved for their continued support on this, continued help. We're just finishing up the design standards now, and it will be finished after the UDL process is finished, and I understand it's fairly close. The next things, next things that we'll be talking about will be our branding, streetscape, signage, and guide signs. We've taken a pause because so many people were gone on spring break, but next week, when spring break's over, why, we're going to continue having meetings and talk about these things. And thanks again for all your support.
Thank you. Moving next to new business, Department of Public Works requests to finance a 2025 Model T880 triaxle dump truck.
I guess that'll be me. We had a tandem truck that went down about three or four, five weeks ago, and we needed to really replace it, so we've been looking for a new dump truck. It's been a lot of work to get to this process at this time, and we found the truck, and it's through, priced out through Sourcewell, and we come before you tonight to ask approval for the financing of that truck through People's State Bank, and the amortization schedule should have been in your packet.
Questions?
Total price of the dump truck, the amortization shows on there $230,000, but that was what we, our rough number, we gave the bank until we got our number locked down, and I think that's in your packet as well as right. It's at, the truck's at $228,104.
Okay. Questions from council?
Yeah, Kip, so this isn't something we have money set aside to get, this is a?
Yes, this is budgeted, and I believe, Mike, it's going to be paid out of the sewer line, wastewater, sorry.
But do we have enough money to pay for it all at once instead of financing it and save the $23,000?
No, I don't think we do, do we?
We have some other purchases too, so we're going to finance.
Any, any money we can throw into, keep that, I know we have a good interest rate, 4.75%, which is pretty good in this market, but I don't know if we have any to put that so we could save a little bit on interest.
We have several things we need to purchase.
Okay.
So we're trying to spread the money out and make purchases. I think on the agenda for the last two meetings, we've held back purchasing a loader, which is a 1997 loader. It needs to replace too, but this kind of jumped up to the front.
This is the first of a combination of about three vehicles, because I'm going to be coming back to you in the next few months for a tandem axle, because what, yours is the Chevrolet tandem?
1998.
Eight. And then I've got a 2,000, I can't remember what year it is offhand, six, I think it may be, dump truck that's coming up on 19 years old or 18 years old, I'm going to replace two as well, so it's kind of a sequence here, so we'll probably have to finance all of it.
To be clear, we didn't anticipate replacing this truck as soon as we had to, but the motor's completely out of it, and it's not recommended that we try to fix it, we just need to move on.
Are we able to sell it for scrap from what we have?
Well, we'll, yeah, we'll probably sell it for scrap. We'll probably come back to you at one point to surplus it, and there is some stuff on the truck that's worth more than salvage, so there could be a possibility of using some of the parts off that truck as well, the bed parts and stuff like that, but as of right now, this is what we're going to go with.
We'll probably put a reserve on it to make sure we get what we should.
Yes, all right.
Further questions from council? Is there action for council on this?
I move that we approve the Department of Public Waste, wastewater, Department of Public Works wastewater request to finance 2025 Model T880 triaxle dump truck.
Second.
Motion is second, Denise, when you're ready.
Scott Olden.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Pamela Samples.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move now to old business, which is discussion on rural transit. Who has this? Anyone?
Well, should we invite Chris Meyer?
If that's what we want.
Chris, did you want to, Chris and Trent, and I think Julie, I saw her.
Good evening, council, how are you? I'm Trent Deckard, Monroe County Council at-large member, here on behalf of the Monroe County Council in our ongoing efforts for funding for rural transit dollars. As you recall, last year, we were here before you, and I'm grateful that you're considering the remaining portion that the town might be able to apply to this effort that we've been talking about for some time. I, I'm not going to speak specifically to numbers, I think Chris has got that, she can talk about that and address that. What I can tell you this is that in this ongoing discussion, to make sure that we're taking care of all the residents in the community and the mobility issues that they have, the county on our end, due to this change in how the state has interpreted federal rules towards rural transit, the county has come forward with $88,000 to continue rural transit in these affected areas that we've talked about for some time. You have committed through the first three months of the year, and I apologize if I'm telling you what you already know, but I think it's important to not only mention that but celebrate that. Thank you for doing that. But there's still an amount that is uncertain for the patrons of this community that I represent alongside you, our mutual constituents, and so I'm here just as one member of the area to make an impassioned plea that the town consider the remaining year and funding that year. Specifically, I would just add to this conversation some things that have probably been said a million times before, but I think are incredibly important. Mobility for all of our constituents we represent is not only a vital thing, it is a necessary thing. People have chosen to be in our communities, both Monroe County and Ellisville, and many of them made those decisions knowing rural transit was an option for them. I have family here, we have considerable history, all of us in this community, and we know, and sometimes don't know individuals that are affected by this, and so I would just finally, on my portion, just say the following, I don't want to speak too long here when others can speak better than I can, is that as one member of this, as a county council member, I'm committed to doing whatever you need us to do to try to be the best partner possible in this effort that was not handed down by the county, was given to us by the state, and give us, and do whatever we can do to make this happen. The last thing I'll just say is, a lot of times in elected office, there are things that we have choices about, and then there are things that we sometimes don't have choices about. Friends, I would argue that I don't think we have a choice here on this one, and that's how the county has approached this, and I would urge the town to continue on the remainder of this year to do everything they can to fund that.
Hi, everyone, Julie Thomas, I am a Monroe County Commissioner and grateful for the opportunity to speak with you for just a moment about this. I'm so glad this is on your agenda, I believe it's past time to make sure that we provide this trans- I believe it's past time to make sure that we provide this transit option for folks in our community. These are people who need to get to the doctor, who need to get to the pharmacy, who need to get to the grocery store, and have no other way of doing it. Rural Transit will be here, no matter what, but whether or not they can serve your residents in Ellisville is in question, and that is our biggest concern. That is our biggest concern, because of course, they are Monroe County residents, and we want to do what we can to help them. So I will say that we are moving forward with combined meetings between Monroe County Council Representative, Councilor Deckard, myself, a couple of members of your great town council. We are going to be meeting regularly. We have a meeting on Friday, and we are going to be figuring out what happens in 2025. This is just to get us through 2024, but to take that off the table will mean that we have more time and energy to devote to coming up with the best solution possible for 2025 and beyond. We want to put together a proposal for Bloomington Transit and move forward from there, and then start talking with them, but we need to be able to take this off our plate first so we can focus on that, and I just implore you, please think of those residents, because we have no other way to serve them. We need your help, and I know things are tight. They're tight everywhere. They're tight in our homes, they're tight in our schools, and every government unit is feeling the pinch, but we have to do this. As Councilor Deckard said, this is a must-do. This isn't an option. This isn't something we could do later or put off for a bit. We really have to take care of this now, and again, the sooner we do, the sooner we can move on and really solve the long-term issue. So I'll be here to answer questions, but I know Chris Myers has done an amazing job. She talked to the business community on Friday at the Ellisville Chamber, did an amazing job, and heard from folks there who are concerned about the very same thing. These are their customers, right? They're their family members and their friends, too, so we really need to step up, and I appreciate you considering this so much. I'll hand it over to Ms. Myers. I just want to say, I don't think there's any speaker happening, so people in the back can't actually hear. I don't know if that's something that, yeah, I just, I didn't know if that was normally what you guys-
You're the best we can hear.
Yep, yep. I just wanted you to know that they may not be able to hear you very well. So you know who I am. I'm here in person instead of online today, so thank you. I'm Chris Myers. I'm with Area 10 Agency on Aging, and of course, we run rural transit. I want to give you an update from January and February trips, because I like to talk logistics here, so you'll remember that when we talked about the need for Ellisville's contribution for the full cost parallel service for 2024, we looked at eight thousand trips for the whole area, forty-eight hundred, that would be urban to urban for Ellisville, and so that amount was for that particular amount of trips. Based on January and February so far, when you subtract the fares, we have about twenty thousand dollars left after February's trips, so I think that's going to buy us into April for sure, which is good news for this particular conversation. But I also want to say, January and February typically are lower usage months, so it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to carry forward to an average of the rest of the year. If we did have trips average about two hundred and sixty per month for the rest of the year instead of four hundred, we're looking at really a total of just about forty-three thousand dollars more needed to cover Ellisville between now and the end of 2024 to, like Julie said, buy us time to come up with that long-term solution that we know we need to have. I have four testimonies from people who could not be here today that I would like to read, but you have a three-minute time, and I'm not super fast at reading. They're not very long. One of them is a little longer, so I would like to share that, because I know that it's important for you to hear from the people who actually use the service and not just those of us who are actually administering it.
Go ahead.
And I also know that we have people here.
Go ahead, but do it quickly, please.
What was that?
Go ahead, but do it quickly, please.
Yep. My name is Doug Owens, and I use the Rural Transit to travel to and from my doctor's appointments. It's a service I greatly appreciate and rely on for my medical needs. My name is Stormy Duggan, or Dugan, I'm not quite sure. I've been riding with Rural Transit close to nine years. Without Rural Transit, my mom nor I would be able to get to grocery stores or anywhere else that we need to go. My mother's disabled, and I'm her caregiver, which means we are on a very tight fixed income already, which means there is no extra in the budget for Uber or Lyft, and with us living in Ellisville and without Rural Transit, I'm not sure how we would manage. Since, as I said, we rely on Rural Transit for getting to town, and we use insurance transportation for getting to doctors, those are the only ways we get around, so if you can help with Rural Transit, keep going, and Ellisville, please help. This is from Susan Younger. I use Rural Transit a lot, and I don't know what I would do if I could not ride with them. I'm handicapped, and all the drivers are so kind and helped me get in the vehicle. I don't drive anymore. I use them mostly for medical appointments. I would not be able to pay for Lyft or another form of transportation without Rural Transit, and this is the longer one. Dear council members, my name is George Lynn Jean Pierre, and I'm writing to ask you to support Rural Transit's services in our community. I'm originally from New York, but in 2022, I decided to move to Bloomington, Indiana due to my acceptance at Indiana University's Mauer School of Law. I'd never visited the Midwest before, let alone Bloomington, before 2022. I had no idea what transportation services were available to me getting me to and from the law school. After reaching out to IU Transportation Services, I called Bloomington Transit and was excited to hear that I would receive free bus rides due to being an IU student. However, when it was time to share my address with them, they told me that I did not live in that area that they serviced because my home was closer to Ellisville. After that phone call, I began to panic. I had no car, the closest family to me lived miles away in Michigan, and my law school classes would be starting in less than two weeks. After doing more research, I discovered Rural Transit and reached out to them. The representative I spoke to was kind and reassuring me that Rural Transit did service my area and would be willing to accommodate my preferred pickup and return times that fit my schedule. Since then, I have been a happy customer of Rural Transit. Their transportation services are very affordable, especially for a full-time student not working and on budget. This transportation service has also been very good to me. Rain or shine, and sometimes even snow, I've always been able to count on Rural Transit to get me to school on time and bring me home safely. I honestly don't know what I would have done without Rural Transit services. Without their rides, I would have had to request and pay for an Uber twice a day, an option that is quite expensive and as an unemployed law, full-time law student. And I know that there are many more like me who have no affordable option for transportation other than Rural Transit and are immensely blessed by their services. For me, I am deeply grateful for Rural Transit, and I know that their services are helping me to realize my dreams of becoming a lawyer just by them showing up every day. Members of the council, I strongly urge you to please continue to support Rural Transit and the members of your community that rely on their services. Thank you. So those are just four for people who could not physically be here today. I have several people that are here, and I believe one online for sure that would, and I'm happy to answer questions and speak to any facet of this discussion.
Let us hear the discussion first, and we may come back to you.
Yep.
Is there any other people who would like to speak? Step up, please. State your name for the record, and you can begin.
I'm happy to carry you, sir.
Go and step up to the podium, state your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
I don't like being referred to as a customer, though, for rural transit. I look at it more than that. A lot of us are patients, and I heard that we wouldn't get to go to our doctor's appointments, and that's right. I don't have any way to go anywhere without Rural Transit. So I think it's common sense to get the funding however you get it. Thank you.
Sir, could you write your name down there for us, too?
Sure.
Guys, are you having trouble hearing us back there?
You don't have any speakers back there.
Something with the mic was bad. There's speakers overhead. I'm not sure why they're not working. I apologize.
Is this any-
Can I speak for myself from this chair? I can't get up.
Hang on one second, Mary.
Alright. My name is Mary Hay, and I've been resident of Elmhurst, oh, not Elmhurst, Ellisville for twenty-five years, and I've been using Rural Transit for ten years. Due to medical needs, I had to quit driving about ten or eleven years ago. All my needs and services are within the Ellisville area and the western part of Bloomington. I have counted on Rural Transit for transportation, totally, almost totally. I can only say that Lisa Herb and Kathy and the dedicated drivers have never failed to get me to and my appointments and return from the appointments. There was a time when they were going to offer a one-way trip. That doesn't work when you're handicapped. As you already know, the boundaries of service have been jeopardized. That's been discussed tonight. I think everybody understands that, but our Director of Area 10 on Aging, the RT Managers, City Council, and Bloomington Transit Authority are working on the solution. You've already heard that. In the meantime, I inquired of the transportation opportunity called Bloomington Access. So I got the papers, I filled them out, my doctor signed them, it was mailed, and this is the letter that I got. It said, "Your application for BT access service has been reviewed and approved. Please be aware, your home address is outside the city limits or outside the service area." Now, I live on Limestone Drive, and across the street is Magna Lee is Bloomington. I can't walk across the street to get and board on a bus, so I'm totally dependent upon Rural Transit. The problem still exists, as we discussed tonight, and I do believe it's in the process. I believe it's going to work out. I pray every day about it. If a transportation service is eliminated, it would affect my ability to be independent in my home. I have no other way to get anywhere. I will lose my independence and control of where I live after twenty-five years, and coming from a large city, I never want to go back. It has enriched my retirement years and my happiness, and the change will happen in our world at times. It's happening. You all know that. We're all experiencing it. I will totally support monetarily and continuing riding with Rural Transit for a safe, friendly, and professional arm of Area 10 on Aging. It's a wonderful organization. They're trying to help us. Rural Transit is, I cannot praise them enough. I have them as friends. I have them as great drivers. It helps me stay connected to the population.
Mary, your time.
I enjoy the people I ride with.
Mary, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Step up to the mic, please.
Good evening. I'm Di Robertson. I work with a lot of folks for different companies. I live with two folks that are handicapped and need bus services, and they work, one of them works, and this service should be expanding, not decreasing. We're putting more people into Bloomington, into Ellisville, and our population is aging. I'm aging. I can't do what I used to do, and it's a blessing to be able to have a service that can get us around. Is that better?
I don't, I think the whole system's down.
Okay. Alright.
Mike?
If we, if we can work together, I mean, Bloomington is in the county, so whatever Bloomington can't get, if they can't get somebody, Rural Transit should be able to pick it up. If Rural Transit can't get somebody and BT can, we should work together to make everybody in the community be able to get wherever they need, and I was hoping that we could possibly get a night service through Rural Transit, because there's so many things that older people want to go to, that older people want to go to, and we could get a bunch of people together and just go on the bus and just be able to get safely home. I mean, we've got all these elder communities and stuff, and their services, if they do have a bus, is very limited, but I want to have you contact me, do whatever we need to do, research, talk to our legislators, whatever we need to do to wind up keeping this service and to increasing it between Bloomington and Ellisville, because it's just a wonderful service, and like everybody said, everybody's so kind over there, and it's really nice that Rural Transit doesn't require fifteen pieces of paper to get onto their service, but thank you very much, and like I said, I'll put my number down, and if there's anything I can do, let me know, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you guys hear us now? Sorry about that.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak from the audience? We'll get to Zoom shortly.
Paul doesn't need a microphone. I'm Paul White. I'm one of the drivers that you've heard some of. I've worked at Rural Transit for just a little over ten years now. I enjoy what I do. I am a public servant. Not every facet of our job is fantastic and fun, and it's not all drudgery, but we are serving people who have needs to the best of our ability, and I know that it takes money to do that. You know that it takes money to do that. So I get a lot of questions from my writers, "What's going to happen at the end of March?" And I say, "I don't know, but we're going to find out." We're hoping for the best, and we're hoping that they are hoping and praying for the best as well. I want to thank the Ellisville Town Council for their support of Rural Transit. It's much appreciated. Thank you for what you have done, and thank you for what you can do. We don't have what somebody referred to as super users. We have users that are all super. All of our people need the service that we provide, and we do our best to give them the absolute best service possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Herb Alt, and I've worked at Rural Transit for, I think, like 2008, 2009. I moved into the area, so I'm not from around here, and I started working here, and I commuted from Jackson County by Brownstown. I raised a few of my grandkids, and I was able to go from a truck driver to a bus driver, and I was able to take my grandkids with me to work. As a single grandpa, this community pitched in and helped me to be successful at that. I grew to learn to love this area very much. I work in the office at Area 10 at Rural Transit, coordinate and dispatch. I also drive, and I end up building a house in Bloomington, and the passengers has actually became family to me, and so Rural Transit will go on. We'll find areas outside of Ellisville. Those passengers out there are dear to my heart, but there's a lot of them right here in Ellisville that are dear to my heart, and I don't want to lose them as passengers. I don't want to not see them every day, talk with them on- I don't want to not see them every day, talk with them on the phone like I've been able to do for so many years. So whatever that anybody can do to help our situation, it is very appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sir, you've already spoke once, so we're going to limit to just one per person.
I can use my whole three minutes. Can I have twenty more minutes?
Sir, you've spoken once. We'll come back to you at the end. We'll let other people speak first.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the public? Step up to the mic, please. Kevin, can you help her with that mic right there?
My name is Janet Smock, and I've been riding with Rural Transit for nearly 30 years. I don't drive a car. Even before I ended up in the wheelchair, I didn't drive a car. Rural Transit is the only way I have to get to Bloomington for whatever reason, and now that I'm disabled, I rely on it at least two or three times a month to get to my doctors and my therapy. And I know money is tight, but this is a service that is, you know, just dear to the heart of a lot of people. A lot of us don't have any other way to get to town. We can't afford Uber. We don't have relatives or anyone around here to help us, and I would strongly, strongly urge you to provide the funding for this, because it is a very necessary service. And I was just very upset when I found out about all this trouble they were having getting financing. It's just very upsetting to people to think they're going to be stranded in their house because they don't have any other way to get out. And Rural Transit is a wonderful service. All the people that work there are just as nice and kind as they can be. They accommodate you if you have problems, you know, they do their best to help, and I hope you will help them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rusty Moss, and I live over in town on Elletsville. I was born in Bloomington in '66. We've been residents of Elletsville since '81, I believe it was, when my parents bought the property. And I'm having circulation problems. I don't doctor down here, because I lived a lot of my adult life in Morgan County, and I have my doctors are in St. Francis. I see about eight specialists. I'm having a lot of circulation problems. I can't always get up there to therapy, and I really need to get to the Y, and I need to be able to get in and out of the hot tub. I'm raising my granddaughter. She's 10 years old. I'm on disability. It's tight, and I really need the service to be able to go to the Y whenever I'm not able to get there myself. It's very important for our life, for my well-being, my health, and to take care of her. So I really need the service to be able to pick me up, and I just live less than a mile from the bus station, I mean, from the bus depot where the hub is. And I don't understand why in the world, you know, I shouldn't be able to get a ride whenever I need to. I don't want to lose that service. I'm a taxpayer. Property taxes, they just went up. So I hope that we can find it to make sure this continues to be able to happen so that we can have this service. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Hank Ball. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, but I might as well. I have, I live over in Forest Park. I have three children who use Rural Transit daily, my children. Lori is 44 years old. We've had her since she was 15. She has some physical and developmental disabilities. She rides Rural Transit from our home to Suite Owen across the county line, which her ride doesn't seem to be in jeopardy. But we have Tommy, who's 22. He's autistic. We adopted him when he was seven years old. He, he is blessed to have a job at Cahy, part-time job, and he's been riding Rural Transit from our house to Cahy. Well, they determined that Cahy is in an urban area, and we're in an urban area, so his ride is in jeopardy. So, and then I have Alexis, who we adopted when she was six months old. She was a Riley baby. Her, her mother was an opiate drug user. She has some disabilities due to that, but she's blessed to have a job over at IU at the stadium, working for Tobias, doing the breakfast service there. But she cleans tables. But her job is in jeopardy, because that's urban area to urban area. So that ride is supposedly going to go away, and Bloomington Transit is not able right now to pick that ride up. So Tommy will lose his job, which he's very blessed to have. The, the president of Cahy, who was gracious enough to award a lot of jobs to autistic people, a few years ago, he, he passed away recently, and they're under new management. So anyway, jobs like that, you know, $18 an hour job for a part-time autistic boy, that's, that's pretty rare. He won't find another one like that. Alexis will lose her job. These, they don't have a lot of opportunities to, to get jobs. So that's where we're at. We appreciate anything you guys can do to allow our family to continue to use Rural Transit. Thank you.
I'm Alicia Foster, and I've been on the transit for about seven years, and I moved over to Elletsville for that purpose, so I'd have transportation to go to my doctors and, and everything I need to be transported to, because I don't drive anymore. I walk most of the places I go, and my body's just wanting to give out on me. So I really appreciate everything that you guys have done, but I wish you'd consider Rural Transit to be in Elletsville, because that's the reason I moved here. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the audience? Okay. You want to come up and address the mic?
My name is Debbie Michael, and I live in a rural area, and we call Bloom-- me and my case manager got on the phone, and we called Bloomington Transit, and they refused to come pick us up, pick me up, to take me to that health facility and stuff. And so we got, we worked things out with Rural Transit, and they were able to give me back and forth to work, because now then I cannot ride the regular buses. I have to take the electric buses, which they definitely need the funding for, to help all that stuff out and everything. These bus drivers drive, drive real hard and everything, and the whole city of Bloomington, Elletsville needs help. So any help we can get, we would appreciate that very much. And I, if it wasn't for Rural Transit, I've got a disabled daughter who's got mild sclerosis and stuff, and without the transportation, me and her would not go out to Walmart twice a month like we like to do and get her out of the house and everything. And she does, she enjoys it, and I love all the bus drivers. They do a wonderful job. So anything we can do, let's help, let's help these people out. Get more, more buses out there. Let's help this town out and get everything in the center that needs help, the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience in the first time that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll let Dylan, I believe you wanted to speak, correct, on Zoom?
I think we have one more.
We'll get back to that. Dylan's turn first. Do we have him muted?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dylan. I'm the president of Elletsville. I've used Rural Transit for the last four-ish years, and I find it to be a really beneficial service to me, because it helps me get from point A to point B. One of the things I do on a weekly basis, two times a week, is volunteer at Area 10 Agency on Aging. And I really enjoy doing that, because it not only gets me out to socialize with others, but also just, you know, opens up a new outlet of like opportunity for me in the real world if I want to get a job anytime soon. Right now, I'm a volunteer for, for them, and so, like I said, losing the service would be very, um, very, um, sad to not only me, but the town of Elletsville. So I think everyone's cooperation within, with this, I know you're all trying your best, but I just wanted to put my, put it out there that I, like us all are coming together as one body. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you for your email, too.
And we'll turn back in person.
So my name's Evelyn Stevens, and I'm a relatively new rider to Rural Transit. And I had been in Hearthstone until August. I was in there all last year, and I never thought that I would be disabled. I was always healthy, and I, this happens. And so I got to come home, and I live by myself. My husband died in August, and I can't drive a car because of my feet are paralyzed. And I live by myself, and my children live away. My daughter lives in Indianapolis. My son lives in Ohio, and I don't really have any family here. And so I depend on Rural Transit to take me to like, for my therapy and different things. And like I said, I'm just pretty new with this, but it's a wonderful organization, and I never in all of my life ever thought I would be in this position. And I just thank you for your support, and we seniors really need it, because we never know when, you know, I, I never thought this would ever happen to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else at the first time? Okay, sir, if you want to stand up and, I'm sorry, after Valerie, if you want to stand up and take the rest of your three minutes, you're welcome to.
Valerie DeWar. I'm coming to you as a businessperson in town. I've listened to all of this, and I don't use Rural Transit. Right now, I don't have to. But I am concerned that we have many people who do. We have patients in our office who do. And I'm not here to ask you to maintain it or not to maintain it, because you have an impossible task with this. And what I really am saying is I think there are many people who are frustrated that you are stuck with this, because that's what it is. You're stuck for now. And I hope that whatever you do will be able to manage for everyone, at least for this year. But I, I, I'm angry that this is a feeling of a position that you're in that you didn't anticipate and, and don't deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to speak one more time? Okay. Anyone else on Zoom? Seeing none, back to the council with discussion.
Well, I've been on the council 20 years, and I really think this is one of the most important decisions that I've had to make. I know that things that I've done on this council affects a lot of people here, like police officers, firemen, the street people, but this personally affects you guys out there, and there's a lot more out there that couldn't make it tonight. So I would plead with the rest of my council to at least fund this the rest of the year until we can come up for permanent funding for, from then on out. So hang in there, guys. We can do this.
I just want to, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight, and I, I do hear you. And just so you know, we're not just been standing still on this. In the, on the course of the months and weeks that this has been going on, I did get a call back from NDOT, because one of the possibilities was if they could just pause the rule. And apparently, we've been considered an urban area since 2000, and they've not enforced the rule since then. So that kicks it up to the Federal Transportation Agency or FTA. And I've got Senator Halchin's staff working on that to see if they can, because we're, we're right now one of the few, if only, communities dealing with it quite like this, but there's others it's going to be. I've talked to Representative Bob Heaton, and he agrees it's something the state does need to address, and he has pledged next year at the state legislature to, to bring this up and see if we can get some type of solution made. The reality is, though, that probably would not go into effect, even if it does get made, until 2026, maybe, if all stars align, middle of 2025, but it's doubtful. And what it does, it comes down to where we get the money from, and that's what I've been struggling with. We've got, I'm hoping some good news. I don't have firm numbers, but Trent and Julie probably know we're getting another portion of the lit in. I don't know what Elletsville's portion would be, but I would be more than willing to put whatever portion that is towards this more as a block grant, instead of saying, "We're funding this," saying, "Here's some more money." And Darla, you would have to answer, the resolution we passed to fund it to March, does that expire at the end of this month, or does that expire when the funding's out?
I think, I don't have the resolution in front of me, but I think it expired at the end of the month, but I would have to check that.
Because that's something the council's--
We could extend that, for sure.
Right. That's when the council's done. I would be happy to make a motion to extend that, at least till the funding is out, which may get us to April, maybe a little bit further. Correct, Chris?
So that would just be extending the original MOU or--
That's correct. Until, because I don't have any firm numbers from, I don't think the county, I mean, the county has the total amount, but I don't know how much each taxing agency's getting on that yet. But that's one. Been praying for a miracle, and that may be the miracle we've been praying for.
Ma'am, did you have anything before I go? Chris, if I can, a couple of questions, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
And then I clearly have my comment. Can you explain, is it 530 funding, 503 funding?
5311 funding.
Can you explain that to us all, please?
Yeah. So FTA has two different types of funding for public transportation.
Okay. Go back for all of us who may not be completely in the know. FTA is--
FTA, Federal Transit Administration.
Okay.
So they're the federal agency that administers grants to states and/or urban providers.
Right.
So there are two funding sources. One is the 5307, which is the urban funds.
Okay.
And then the other one is the 5311, which is the non-urban funds.
Okay.
Monroe County Commissioners receive from NDOT, because the 5311 funds come through to NDOT and then get divided up to, by formula based on service population, to areas in the state of Indiana. And Monroe County is the actual grant recipient for the Rural Transit grant, and-- and we've been the sub-recipient for decades. Um, so we serve a four-county area, actually Monroe County plus three others with that. The urban funds that go from FTA directly go to Bloomington Transit Public Corporation.
Okay, how, how do we arrive at those funds? Maybe I'm missing that. Where do those numbers come from?
Those numbers come from the feds. So the fed does, they have a formula, 5307 formula. You can actually go on and look at the allocation for that service area and that's based on the, the population of that area. So the public funds for urban, the 5307 is an allocation that's happened for, you know, also decades and has, you know, covered that urban area, not just the city of Bloomington. So historically, the 5307 funds that the city of Bloomington or Bloomington Transit receives has included funds to, technically the formula is to include the urbanized area outside of the city of Bloomington.
So if they're not providing service to that urbanized area, I'm assuming some of that area contributes to that funding mechanism? The numbers of it?
Yes.
So where has that money gone for the last 20 years?
It's gone to subsidize the city of Bloomington Transportation.
Okay. So the county has a funding stream coming in 5311?
Yes.
And the city has a 5307 fund?
Yes.
So Ellisville's essentially caught in the middle? Ellisville's essentially what?
So Ellisville technically is under the service area of Bloomington Transit grant funds.
Even though we have no Bloomington Transit service?
Correct.
Okay.
Get money for it.
So-
Yeah, so I mean ideally, and I don't mean to stop me if you want, but ideally this long-term solution will partly be getting the Bloomington Transit Corporation to actually utilize that 5307 funding and/or some of the, the state public mass transit funding that is allocated for that urban area, which includes Ellisville.
And where does that go to?
What was that?
That urban area mass transit funds, where does that money go to?
That all goes to Bloomington Transit. So ideally, we could find a way to pressure and get, and get the Bloomington Transit Board to agree and have their general manager agree to utilize some of those 5307 and PMTF funds to pay for this service that's urban to urban. If that's, Bloomington Transit does it themselves and we don't do that, fine. If it's subcontracting to rural transit to do it, like they've done in Indy and the surrounding counties, that, that's the other community that NDOT has helped do that with. And they, they had a direct contract, Indigo contracted with the surrounding counties who were also doing like rural transit was. Um, and it just was a seamless delivery of service for them. They just built it separately. Bloomington Transit chose not to do that. They said it wasn't in their best interest and that they wanted to expand and potentially expand service. The response we got was that they wanted to charge the full rate for that and not utilize the grant funding that's available to them. So that's part of this whole power play that needs to be figured out, quite frankly, um, in the next few months, I think.
So I guess off the top, and, and I'm really not, I'm trying to understand, not trying to-
It's complicated.
Dramatize this amongst everybody.
Yeah.
But the city's been receiving funding that should have been going to the county for the last 20-plus years if we believe the urbanized decision-making tree at the state of Indiana, where we became an urban area, but somebody forgot to tell everyone. Federal, sorry, federal forgot to tell, tell the state and to tell us. So that money is awash somewhere and the people of Ellisville are left with no provider and no funding stream even though we should fit within one or the other.
Technically speaking, rural transit has essentially provided the urban-to-urban trips using funds that we shouldn't have and that should have been paid by Bloomington Transit's 5307 funding.
Okay.
That's the bottom line. So those trips, we, you know, if, if everything had started from the beginning where people were in their boxes like they were supposed to according to the map of the, you know, census, technically speaking, rural transit should have never provided transportation in, in the urban-to-urban area. But we did because we were always transparent and it was city to county, county to city. That's the way it's always been. Um, but that's not the way we can continue. They want to keep us to those, I, I have this visual of the map, so it's this blue line, right? Um, of the urbanized area and Bloomington Transit is the urban provider. They, they receive those 5307 funds. So they can decide to utilize some of that 5307 funding to pay for these other trips that are outside of the, the city of Bloomington. And as you know, in August of last year, they got the city's approval, city council's approval to legally serve beyond the city of Bloomington, which was the, the one hurdle that they had. Uh, legally, they couldn't do that prior to having city council approval. So they have the legal means to do that, they just need to make the next step and actually decide to utilize some of those funds. So, you know, for instance, FTA funds only pay for the net 50% of the cost, right? So if I've, if I've got, you know, a hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses after taking off fares, the feds are only going to pay, their grant is only going to pay 50,000. So the PMTF state funds typically bring in, or at least for us, bring in about 20, 20% of the need. That still leaves 30% local match needed. So there's still some need to pay for that additional amount to make the whole of transportation costs. So that, I mean, that, but that's ideally, we'll be at that place where we're not talking 100%, we're talking about 30%, right?
Right, but correct me here and forgive me because this is going to be very clumsy how I'm going down this road. It's, but how it works in my mind, so let that terrify you as it would. Um, essentially, you serve as the de facto bus service or transportation service for the county based upon everything I'm hearing. Is that correct?
We're, we're the public transportation provider for the rural services, yes.
And the city of Bloomington has a, and that's not fair because it's not truly a city of Bloomington Department. It's a city of Bloomington Corporation that is independent from the city. Um, they have a bus service that is funded both by Bloomington tax dollars and FTA funds.
Yes.
So, so both communities have a funding stream and both communities have a, if so what, de facto, bus service. Yet Ellisville does not have a bus service, nor does it have a funding stream. Is that all correct?
Ellisville's part of the county, right? So Ellisville technically is still what we have always considered part of our service area until recently being clarified by the feds and NDOT that we can't, but yes. It would technically fall, you would technically fall under Bloomington Transit's urban 5307 service area.
Okay. Thank you, that clarifies it in my mind for me. Uh, one other quick question. Do you think to get to the end of the year, we're around 40,000?
43,000. I, I did some math before I came here and this is based on, I haven't had a, I'm looking at Lisa, a closeout of February trips, but I think, you know, I think based on January and February's, we're looking at like 12,500 build um, to Ellisville. And so that leaves, you know, $20,000 that we have left.
And refresh my memory again, for those in the public, how much did we set aside at the beginning of the year for these three months?
33,000, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. I guess my comment is this, and I'll, I'll preface it with this. Um, this is a very hard um, matter to take up for a variety of reasons. Um, one of which is setting in the room who's closer to me and my family than a lot of our family is. And um, she very much likes this service. I, all the people I've met with rural transit over the years have been absolutely phenomenal. With that said, I need to explain to everyone, the town of Ellisville does not run a transportation service. As we've just heard, city of Bloomington has a transportation service that they get funding for. The county, although de facto, so I understand Trent and everyone else who came, please forgive me, point you out, have a bus service. The town of Ellisville has never run a bus service. Ever run a bus service. Nor do we have a funding stream for said bus service. And, and this becomes very hard decisions because it is deserving for people to have transportation. But I'll take it back to something that's a, a little closer to home for all of us. No, and I'll just leave it at that. There are other priorities that towns and cities have amongst the general welfare of the public, whether that be sewer, whether that be water, whether that be trash collection, whether that be whatever else. And just as though the town and the county do not offer trash collection, the city of Bloomington does. There's a funding stream for that. There's not a funding stream for transportation in the town of Ellisville. I, I like William's idea of a block grant and I can, can get on board with a lot of that. But I need people to understand that this is not the town starting a bus service or beginning a bus service. And quite frankly, um, to just force this responsibility on the town and on the county, so forgive me for excluding my uh, compatriots over there, um, i- is not fair. Because if, had we run one to begin with, sure, absolutely, that's in our bailiwick, we need to provide that service. We have never done that. We provide water, we provide sewer, we believe, police, we provide fire, we provide planning services. We have never provided trash service. We have never provided transportation service. And it's not something with a tax base that we can maintain. Now, we may have a windfall that we just learned of today that may potentially make up the possibility for that block. But to say that we can fund this year after year after year is simply not feasible at this point in the town's lifespan. There's not enough monies coming in to do everything. So the question there is how many people lose their water service every month? More than you would think, more than we would want. And we try and work with those folks to get their water turned back on. It's the same with other things and I, I think this can go on the same category, but we have to have some very careful parameters so that everyone understands this has never been, nor can it become, the town's responsibility until the town can fiscally support it. And right now, we're just not there. So that said, is there discussion amongst the council of where we go from here? I'm all in favor of lifting the moratorium on date and running the rest of the dollars that we've already set aside and then revisiting once we have firm numbers on what's coming from the ED lit, the excess from that into this.
Dan, I'll go ahead and make a formal motion to can, the resolution that expires uh, March 31st to extend that until the money is depleted, whenever that date, with no specified date, but the depletion of the fund.
Um, I guess I got a problem with that. Um, because that gives these guys no warning. I mean, the funding runs out in three weeks, whatever. We let these people know Monday they don't have a ride. So I, I don't really like that idea. I would rather put a date instead of the funding.
The only problem with that is we don't know how long the funding will last and we haven't appropriated any more funds.
And, and I understand that, but um, my personal feeling, I think we definitely need to fund this towards the end of the year. But I'm willing to look into these options we just found out today. But I want to put a date on this and if it costs us another 5,000 or whatever, so, so be it. But just the fact that there'll be no, no notification whatsoever when the funding runs out. I mean, Chris, you could call us, but you know, we don't give these people any warning, so.
Here's the only problem with that, Dan, I don't disagree with you, but we haven't appropriated anything more, so we can't just go in the hole and then appropriate after the fact because we had to have an appropriation number for this. So let me ask a quick question, then we may be able to help you out with this. One of the county representatives, maybe you have a better handle on this. Do you have any idea when we're going to get firm ED lit numbers?
Uh, I, I saw a report this week. I would think here within a few days, we would have the official amount.
So within a month, we'll, we'll know?
Why don't you have it now, I mean for this meeting?
Communication is to and through the council, not into the crowd. So the reason we don't have that, to answer your question, is that comes from the state of Indiana. It does not come from the county. So you think within a couple of weeks, Trent, for sure?
Yeah, within a week I would say, for, for sure.
Okay. So Dan, how about we revisit this? If we, if we lift the date and we can revisit it at the next meeting when we have firmer numbers?
Let's see what she has to add.
I was just going to say, you could actually amend some of the language to say not to exceed 33,000 initially too. I don't remember because I don't have that agreement in front of me. Um, so that would make sure that, you know, until there was an additional allocation that could be done by the council.
That would still put, that would, that would still cause the same issue Dan was talking about though.
But Dan's right, we just need to figure a way to do it appropriately where we have an appropriation to back up the funding. Because we can't approve something if the money's not set aside for it already.
Right, but I, I'm suggesting that if you say not to exceed 33,000, then you could have a date that's-
You're right.
You know, quite a ways out and still not have us-
How much do you think realistically will be used in the next 30 days? I know February and January are the short months.
I think on average, we're looking at about $6,500 a month.
And you think there's roughly 20,000 left?
Yes, after, after February.
So that should buy us at least two months to figure this out.
If everything stays the same, yes.
So I would suggest at least six weeks then. And that gives us a two-week time.
Well, how about we just, again, lift it and we just revisit it at our next meeting and the meeting thereafter if we have to. She has the money, according to her, to make it through there.
Right, um, well, I, I guess my feeling is, I, I, I know how hard it is for these people to get here to the meetings.
What I'm saying though is we can re-appropriate if we need to, more money, we just can't do it tonight. Because we had a, we had a specific appropriation in, that was brought before council approved.
Right, and I understand that. But, you know, my point being, two weeks, so we're going to revisit this next meeting?
No, what I'm saying is it, with William's motion, if I understand it, is the money is free to be spent beyond a date which we had set arbitrarily.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
All right.
So that, that cap is now gone, however, the money cap remains until we can figure out what we're actually doing with money's incoming or whatever else.
And as long as this is put back on the agenda for the following, whenever we come up with an issue, so.
Whenever we come up with the, the actual funding strategy.
So, right now I have a motion.
You want to refresh that?
Okay, I'll make a motion to uh, to amend. I don't know the actual resolution number that we passed before, but uh, do I need that to specify that in the motion, Darla?
Your motion says to extend motion until all funds are depleted.
Right, but I'm trying to get the actual original uh, ordinance number that we passed.
Well, what you're, yeah, what you're really extending is the MOU.
Okay, it's an MOU, okay. So I'd like to extend the MOU to uh, to have an indefinite date, but to be able to extend and end when those funds are depleted and not before then.
Second.
Motion in a second?
Scott Alden?
Yes.
Dan Swalton?
Yes.
William Mallett?
Yes.
Pamela Sample?
Yes.
So that motion passes. We revisit this as soon as we get firmer ED lit numbers and determine whether we can offer a grant at that point or if the council desires to go in another, another direction.
Yep.
Okay. Chris, do you mind sticking around for just a few minutes afterwards? Thank you. All right, moving back to the water project. Are we ready to address that?
Let's take them under advisement.
So is there a motion for that?
Um, where is it here?
It's for the Starnes Road bids.
Open bids?
Yes.
Oh, I move table ordinance 2024-04 to review the bids.
You're taking-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're taking the bids under advisement for the Starnes Road Water Project.
Right.
Quotes, sorry.
Quote.
That's technically correct.
And there were three bids, right?
Yes.
Okay. What were the bids, the 137, 140, and what was the first one?
133, 56, 50, 140, 466, 46, 137, 552, 96.
All right. So my motion is to table it and we can take it under advisement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Pam.
Whenever you're ready.
Darla?
Yes.
Dan Swalton? William Mallett?
Yes.
Pamela Sample?
Yes.
Okay, that motion's tabled. Now we're going to move back to privilege of the floor. Anyone have a business for the council that's not part of the normal agenda?
Good evening, Mr. President. Uh, Council Distinguished Staff, this is Christopher Amger from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and I just wanted to thank the town of Ellisville for, for joining the Bloomington Chamber. We're been entrenched uh, here in the community with our work at the Success School through the, uh, the award-winning RBB District with uh, our literacy and career programming we've been doing there. Uh, and I just want to make sure that we have some great programming that all staff and council are eligible. Uh, on Thursday, we're going to do an audition technique for the business world. This is bringing drama into techniques into the business world. I don't know what that's going to include, but it should be fun. That's at the library downtown Bloomington Thursday. Our Rise: Mastering Leadership Essentials is going to be next week, the 19th. That's a full day, take advantage of that. Good chance to, to really gain that professional development in leadership. Um, and then we have, next Thursday is our Business After Hours, which that will be at Lee Supply, that's on East 3rd Street. Love to see all of the great people here, uh, their networking and just talking with each other in a very informal, fun setting. But I just wanted to say thank you very much. And before I, I go, we have our- And before I go, we have our Valor Awards that are going to be May 8th. We've sent out applications for fire here in Elletsville Police. We'll be honoring those first responders on that luncheon at the convention center on the 8th of May. We're excited about it, so I wanted to make sure you sort of mark that on your calendar. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, move to supervisor comments. Start with Denise and we'll go backwards this time.
Real quick, President. The solar eclipse planning was sent out. If you guys have any concerns or comments, please send those to myself or Zach Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the council for recognizing Matt Seabot. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. He earned it. Deputy Chief?
I have nothing.
You said that loud.
Counsel-
I'll move over here.
Yeah.
Counsel comments? Seeing none. Meeting is adjourned.